Good evening and welcome to tonight's city council meeting. Today is Tuesday, December the sixth. The time is now six P M. Day is twenty twenty-two. The regular meeting of the city council of the city of Trinidad will round out the order. Would you please rise for the pleasure? Mr. Maywood, would you please lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, roll call, please.
Debono.
Here.
Criego.
Here.
Ogoltry.
Shu.
Here.
Thurman.
Here.
Williamson.
Here.
Rico.
Here.
Item two, approval of the agenda. Council have any changes to the agenda they'd like to make? Entertained a motion?
We approve the agenda.
Second?
Second.
Call vote, please.
Debono.
Yes.
Criego.
Yes.
Shu.
Yes.
Thurman.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Rico.
Yes. Item three, policy item and staff reports. Mr. Rooker, do you have anything for staff?
Nothing tonight on this side.
Okay. Item four, petitions or communications are all written. Do you have anyone signed up? We do have one letter that we received from someone, and I'll read it. This is dated November the none.
None.
November the fifth. Dear members of Trinidad City Council, I'm writing to thank the city council and the Trinidad Community Foundation for the Trinidad one thousand, for the recent one thousand dollar grant to the Art Council of Trinidad to support next summer's fifth annual Make Art Fair at the Trinidad History Museum. This is the largest grant we have received from the city. It will be used to help pay for art supplies for the event. At last year's event, we had approximately, hold on, I just lost it. At last year's event, we had approximately one hundred fifty participants who made over five hundred works of art, including tie-dyed T-shirts, Mandela rock paintings, mosaics, alcohol ink paintings, clay modeling efforts, and acrylic pour art paintings. Next year, we hope to assist even more participants and have one or two new media for people to try. The event is free to all participants. This event has been wonderfully received, and next year's version is as eagerly anticipated. We are trying to help the Trinidad become known as the, as an art town. In the same vein, we are sponsoring the second annual Trinidad Art Youth Show next April. The Art Council will spend every dime of the awarded grant on art supplies. We invite members of this Trinidad City Council to come to the next Make Art Fair. You can see for yourselves how this grant is being spent and make some art at the same time. Thank you so much for this generous assistance. And also, let me pull this other letter around that I received today. This is just for information. Received this letter. And from a Nancy Lucia Humphrey. And she actually sent a letter to Jared Polis. And it says, Dear Governor Polis, it is doubtful that you will read this, as I was recently informed that you do not read letters mailed to you. Earlier, I was told by your staff member after repeated calls to your office that only emails are read. This was the reason given why there was never a response. I also mailed copies to Phil Rico, Trinidad Mayor, Eric Johnson, editor, Trinidad Chronicle News, the Denver Post, Denver, Colorado, Senator Cleve Simpson, Senator Richard, Representative Richard Holthorff, Kim McDonald, History Colorado Bar member. And Mr. Watson, he did print the letter. Other than that, not a single responded, which I will do so tomorrow. Not one, it seemed that no one cares as no, as no other reason can be determined. I believe that you have made several trips to Trinidad. As far as I know, the the back of Bloom property was not part of your agenda. Very sad. Leadership at this very level is absent. Truly a tragedy. And on a personal note, I guess they gave, they've given money to the, but she's decided not to do so this year. And I, I don't know, she expects city council to do something with the Blue Mansion, and that's not our, under our purview. But I will call her tomorrow and talk to her about that. Item five, consent agenda. Five A, approval of the regular meeting minutes of November the fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, special meeting minutes of November the twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two. Item B, approval of the date changed to previously approved special event permit filed by Arthur Roy Mitchell Museum, Arthur Roy Mitch, Arthur Roy. Arthur Roy Mitchell Memorial Incorporated on one fifty East Main Street. From December the ninth to December the sixteenth, twenty twenty-two. Ms. Shumaker, I believe you're here. Thank you for being here. Item C, approval of the bills for eight million, four hundred thirty thousand, three hundred ninety-three dollars and two cents. Item D, approval of payroll, twenty November the twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two, through December the ninth, twenty twenty-two, in the amount of four hundred thirteen thousand, one hundred one dollars and sixty-six cents. Entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Call vote, please.
Debono.
Yes.
Criego.
Yes.
Shu.
Yes.
Thurman.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Rico.
Yes. Item six, public hearings. Six A, public hearing for consideration of an ordinance authorizing the sale of certain real property owned by the city of Trinidad, three point nine four acres east of Trinidad off of County Road twenty-eight point two to Tanner Back Rack. Hearing is now open. Ms. Garrett?
Oh, she is not here tonight.
Do you have anything on to add to that?
Mayor, no. This is just the second reading, and I don't know if there's anyone here to speak on a public hearing, but they're certainly welcome.
Okay. Does council have any questions?
No.
Okay. Anyone online or in the audience wants to speak for or against the consideration of the ordinance? Hearing none. Hearing is closed. Item six A one, second reading of ordinance authorizing the sale of certain real property owned by the city of Trinidad, three point nine four acres east of Trinidad off of County Road twenty-eight point two to Tanner, Tanner Back Rack. Entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Call vote, please.
Debono.
Yes.
Criego.
Yes.
Shu.
Yes.
Thurman.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Rico.
Yes. Item seven, unfinished business. We have none. Item eight, miscellaneous business. Eight A, consideration of appointment Jeffrey Hecht, I guess, to the Urban Renewal Authority Board. Mr. Hecht, I think you are here. Thank you for attending tonight. Entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Mr. Hecht, gonna come forward, please? Have anything else to add to your application?
Um, I'm just happy to, I've been here for about twenty months now, retired teacher, and I really enjoy being in this town, and I just want to see what I can give back to it so that my grandchildren, my children, they can enjoy the fruits of this beautiful town. That's basically why I'm volunteering to do this, so it makes it better for them in the future.
Thank you for volunteering. We need, we need volunteers, and thank you very, very much.
Yes.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Call vote, please.
Debono.
Yes.
Criego.
Yes.
Shu.
Yes.
Thurman.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Rico.
Yes. Item B, consideration of appointment, appointment of Chelsea Kelly Wawee? Is that correct? Is that correct?
No.
Come on up and tell us.
Troy.
It's funny just to listen to it. It's called who they hate.
Okay. You were close, man.
You were close. I'll give you that when you notice.
I looked at that, I said, okay. You put us this way.
I came just to hear you say it.
Entertain a motion, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discuss, any discussion?
I interviewed Jessica Huffman today, and we were, I was trying to pronounce your name because she had mentioned you on the radio today, so.
Oh, she did?
Yeah.
Oh, fantastic.
Uh, thank you for offering your services to the city and to the library.
Well, thank you for considering me. I'm excited.
Do you have anything else that you'd like to add?
No, just to say thank you for the opportunity, and I'm excited to see what I could do at the library and be a strong advocate for it.
Thank you for your contribution.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Call vote, please?
Debono.
Yes.
Criego.
Yes.
Shu.
Yes.
Thurman.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Rico.
Yes. Item eight C, first reading of an ordinance, commanding Article thirteen, Chapter fourteen, to adjust cultivation fees due to the city of Trinidad on cultivated retail marijuana from average market rate to contract price between emphyllid marijuana businesses. Set the hearing date for consideration of said ordinance on December the twentieth, twenty twenty-two, at six P M. Need someone to introduce?
I'll introduce it.
Also, entertain a motion?
I'm all moved.
Okay, second?
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Garrett's not here. Mr. Rooker, do you have anything?
Ms. Garrett is actually on the line, Mayor, and I apologize. I didn't read, logged in.
There she is.
Audra? Give us a little information, please.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so, good evening, Mayor and City Council. This or, this ordinance proposes to change the cultivation fee that would be remitted by marijuana cultivation operations that are unaffiliated. So, um, by unaffiliated, that means that they don't have either a local store or even a store that would be, for instance, in Pueblo. What it proposes is a charge based on their actual contract price for the sale of that cultivated marijuana as opposed to the state's determined average market rate. So it's more equitable for those cultivators because they're paying on a percentage based on the actual sale. Just, just as you would a sales tax on a tangible item, it would be similar to that as opposed to paying a rate based on what an average cost is. And the difference between, um, one who's unaffiliated and one who's affiliated and why you charge, have a different, I guess, scheme for that remittance is because someone who has an affiliated grow could basically set their own contract price, and it could be, it could be lowballed by them, and it would result in them paying a far lower amount of cultivation fee than what would be expected. So that's the gist of the ordinance. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
I think there was something in the notes that I guess the, the state mentioned, uh, something about just what you were talking about to make it more equitable, I guess, and it was interesting, so. I'll pass on.
That's correct.
Council, do you have any questions?
I have no questions.
I have none.
None.
Any questions?
No questions.
Nothing, pass on, discuss in the past.
Okay. Mr. Rooker, do you have anything to add to that?
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to highlight, this is something that was brought to our attention by the cultivators themselves. They've spoken at meetings to you all after we adopted the original ordinance, I think, back in September. So I just wanted to mention that. It's us being responsive to their concerns, and, and I, I believe this is a good thing to do for our cultivators.
Okay.
Mayor, if I could, please, that's absolutely correct. And as you'll recall, we were, council was reducing the twenty-five dollar per pound cultivation fee, and that applied to some and not others. And so this is kind of covering those that were not covered.
Yes.
Mr. Rooker is absolutely correct.
Okay. Any other thoughts? Call vote, please.
Debono.
Yes.
Criego.
Yes.
Shu.
Yes.
Thurman.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Rico.
Yes. Item eight D, first reading of an ordinance appropriating certain sums of money out of the revenues of the city of Trinidad, Colorado, to defray and meet the liabilities of the city of Trinidad for fiscal, for fiscal year beginning January the first, twenty twenty-three, and ending December the thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. Said ordinance being termed the annual appropriation bill for the twenty twenty-three fiscal year, setting the hearing date for consideration of said ordinance on December the twentieth, twenty-two, at six P M. An amount of sixty-two million, five hundred thirty-five thousand, twenty-one dollars. So need someone to introduce?
I'll introduce.
Okay, in motion?
Uh, so moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Cheryl. You scared the heck out of me with that dollar mark. Understood that, do you remember? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council and Mayor. We had a work session a couple of weeks back for the preliminary budget. This is our first reading. I've handed out some highlights and changes to the budget. This, this budget includes a two percent increase for all departments as a placeholder until union negotiations are completed. I believe that last meeting is tomorrow.
Yeah, we are meeting quickly with our unions, and we will have a better proposal for you in the near future as to how we'll handle pay increases for twenty twenty-three.
This budget also includes two full-time employees for economic development. We discussed this in the work session. A new position we've included is a full-time employee in engineering, which is titled a city engineer. We currently have a tech, an engineering tech position that's not filled, and we will be using funds plus that position to create the city engineer position. And it also includes a full-time employee to the police department, an e-discovery clerk. And then in the work session, we did discuss a part-time library clerk. That was being added. I have increased or reduced the general sales tax by four hundred and fifty thousand and marijuana sales tax by one point four million and an overall revenue decrease of nine hundred and forty-one thousand. And that's just because of the way the year turned out. We, let's see. We still have a remaining surplus of a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, which will probably is intended for additional salary increases. Again, that is contingent upon the final union negotiations. And also in the budget, which probably scared Mayor.
Correct.
Uh, we, we are overspending the budget by one million, fifty-eight thousand next year because of the fire department apparatuses. But if you recall, council has committed those funds out of our reserves to cover those costs. In our utility funds, again, there's a two percent salary increase as a placeholder, and it, Power Light has a dirt digger truck and a single man bucket truck budgeted. Water has a water treatment plant operator position budgeted, as well as a new vehicle. And gas has a welder truck budgeted. We have added the Economic Development Fund to the budget for twenty twenty-three, and that's because of the housing incentives and the two million dollars that council have directed to the Economic Development Fund. So we're going to recognize possibly a million dollars in spending. However, we won't know until the projects get going. And then finally, capital fund had a lot of activity. Most importantly is a new, or budgeted amount of six point four million dollars, and that's for the U.S. Department of Transportation Raise Grant or the Southwest Chief Restoration. Since we are the fiscal administrators of that grant, we have to recognize the revenue and expense for the project. Also included the C dot Santa Fe Trail Pedestrian Path, which is a grant we received earlier this year, and that's a two point two five million dollar match. So, other than that, our budget, the final amount appropriated is sixty-two million, five hundred and thirty-five thousand, twenty-one dollars.
Now, that doesn't, does that include that two percent increase across the board at this point in time? But you're still got some negotiations, I think, that you're going on.
That is correct.
And the other question, real quick, and to turn over to council, is that that raise grant, I do know that that is an overall twenty-five billion dollar, and I guess that would be sent out in increments. This is going to be the increment that they're talking about this next year.
Right, and I'm still finalizing details. It's possible we have to include the whole twenty-five million dollar in our budget with the twenty-five million dollar offset in revenue. I just haven't clarified that. Right now, this is just the R proportion, the, the F R A portion, the local portions, Amtrak's portion, and then Kansas Department of Transportation and Colorado Department of Transportation. So that's what those numbers include.
And, Mr. Rooker, I, Dave Singer asked me a question today. I'll refer that to you later on, or tomorrow, we'll talk to you about that.
Okay.
Questions from council? Do you have anything else to add?
No, I don't.
Questions from council?
Cheryl's gonna ask you about the e-discovery clerk. Is that the process of litigation with electronic data?
Everything, all the discovery criminal cases is done by e-filing. So all the reports, all the evidence. Yes, and it usually is transmitted by the DA's office, but I think it goes from the PD to the DA. But I think that's probably why.
I got part of it, though.
Okay.
Every year at this time, I'll look at you and say, thank God I don't have that woman's job.
It was, it's been tough. It's very difficult.
I'm having a hard time just reading it. Just a quick question, general. So how soon will we amend the budget if that wage increase isn't at the two percent? Is that done immediately?
We will know in the next couple of weeks, and then when the final reading is presented to council, we'll have that in the budget.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. That's what I needed to know. Thank you. God love you.
Yeah, Cheryl, on the, uh, the full-time engineer?
Yes.
Wasn't, we're gonna do something different there?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, council member. So we are taking one of the positions, the engineering tech positions that's vacant, and using money for that to create a city engineer position, offsetting it with some general fund money as well. The idea is to have a full-time city engineer dedicated to managing infrastructure projects and, and working through all of the, the things that we're doing to supplement having the public works director. So we would have a public works director and a city engineer as well in that department to diversify some of the workload and see if we can get to more efficient operations.
Who's gonna be the?
Who's gonna be the city engineer?
No, I mean, do we have, do you have a city engineer already?
We have a public works director who is an engineer. We don't have a specific city engineer.
And a public work, are, were you gonna hire somebody for him? Move the, move him to the engineering?
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's likely what we'll do. So Mr. Just would become city engineer, and then we would hire a public works director.
Then, uh, I thought we were gonna do something with a cement crew, four or five guys, or is that still in the?
We're still analyzing that, looking into it. While it would save us money long-term, right now, our budget really just doesn't have the resources to add that in. We're monitoring that over the next few months as revenues come in, and we're hoping that maybe we can bring a budget adjustment for that in the next fiscal year. But that is a priority for us. We want to make sure we can, we can get that going and do our own house cement work or concrete work.
Okay. Then on the city, city like paving, uh, are we doing streets? Or what exactly is that amount? That isn't very much to even do a block?
It's, it's not very much. It's, um, I think it's resurfacing and upgrading and just maintaining streets.
Potholes.
It's, yeah, it's not, it's not a major rehabilitation project or anything like that. It's just fixed, fixed maintenance.
And then you have, uh, oh, just out of curiosity, Monument Lake improvements, Buckhorn requests so much, and we're giving them two hundred thousand over that, what's, what?
Do you remember on that? It's for your fish.
Bigger fish? There better be some big fish for two hundred thousand hollies.
Whales.
Three hundred and thirty-five thousand has been requested by Buckhorn. And then the additional is what has been appropriated by the capital improvements plan, which is uh, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So that's just in the four-year C I P plan. We automatically budget that amount, and then plus Buckhorn's request. So if you add, if you add those together, it's
Yeah.
three, five hundred eighty-five thousand.
That two hundred thousand goes for what? Who decides that? I mean, is that art? Is that the city doing it for improvements there, water, whatever?
That would be for the city's district. So I know that Gil Ramirez works separately from Buckhorn, and I know that he wanted to repair the fish station or tear it down or something to do with the fish washing station or whatever you call it. And then I believe the lodge needs some repairs on the roof. So more, I think it would be more of our assets repairs versus the graveling of the roads, repairing, or, oh, they do do that, repairing cabins. I don't know. It's, it's at our district.
Yeah, I just kind of, and then the ADA improvements, is that enough to cover for this year on the curbs and gutters that we are planning on doing? Or is that gonna just?
Mayor, council member, this is still us chipping away at it. So it doesn't cover everything that we need to do, but this is what we're allocating to continue with our improvement process.
And the A D E access, what's that for nine hundred and fifty thousand? What is that gonna include?
So the ADA improvements, oh, I should have, I typed that wrong, I'm sorry. ADA improvements for one million is actually for buildings. City buildings, which could be the grandstands or whatever we decide to use that funding for. And then the ADA access, that's what we're using for the curb.
That's what I, yeah, that's what you said, I just kind of.
Yes.
Because I, I didn't understand what you had for improvements for the buildings. Okay. Thank you.
I think that's up to match funding, one point five last year, one point nine this year.
Uh, I didn't see anything for Parks and Recreation. The general fund that was brought up, last meeting I had with the, with Jim Green, they were talking about hashing out some, just general funds for parks, recreation, golf course, et cetera.
So Parks and Recs will be submitting their budget request through the marijuana funding, and that, we should be having a work session on that next week.
Got you.
Uh, Cheryl, I, Cheryl Karen's sentiments. That's all. A lot of stuff to get your head around, and thank you for everything you do. I just had a couple of questions. The ADA improvements, re-budgeted one million. So that money is not earmarked for specific funds? That, that will be, um, divided out into funds that will be, I'm sorry, projects will be presented?
That's correct. We've been putting in one million because of the settlements, but there's always been talk about finishing the grandstands using that money, and that would be the start. We just haven't gotten to that stage.
Okay. And then I just had a follow-up question about the Monument Lake improvements at five hundred and eighty-five thousand. How, how is that money spent? Is that given to Buckhorn directly and they spend it? Or do we oversee the expenditure through our procurement process?
So it is spent by Buckhorn, and we reimburse them. It is overseen by Gil Ramirez, who runs the North Lake, Monument Lake aspect of our, um, of our asset. He, we are not requiring him to go through procurement process because we have such a difficult time finding contractors to be in that area anyway. So, but Gil is verifying that the gravel's delivered, that the amount of hours are spent spreading the gravel or the work is being completed on the cabin, so that's the oversight that we have.
I think, I think it's money well spent. I mean, the
It's getting done. That's the difference.
Improving consistently, so.
The projects are being completed, whereas before, we had all this money and couldn't get anybody up there to get the work done. So it's moving right now.
And then the final question I had, um, we're moving on to twenty twenty-two, obviously, and then twenty twenty-three. With the twenty twenty-two budget, how's, how's that process handled? Where money was allocated, twenty twenty-two budget, but isn't spent until twenty twenty-three? I think a good example would be like the First Street project. How, how is that?
So First Street project has been carried forward to 2023.
So I, I didn't find it, is it in here specifically?
Yes, it's in the capital projects, 6.6 million. Yeah, yes, 6.6 million.
Okay.
Also, there are some tangible items that we haven't received. For example, gas department has ordered a truck, our wheel loader. I think the truck was 47,000, the wheel loader's 207,000. All of those, I will make the decision next week if they have to be moved into 2023, because it's likely that we won't receive them by fiscal year end.
Okay, so that, that also gives next year's budget, it's sort of inflated then?
It's gonna boost it. So they'll be technically dipping into the reserves, because it's already been encumbered.
Okay. I have another question.
Cheryl, just one more question, I, I, just for curiosity, on the First Street project, it was budgeted for 55 billion, 200,000. How come it's up to six, what happened on that?
We had some extra funding, and I moved it, I increased it by a million, just because
Yeah, because it's, yeah, I was just kinda curious, because I know
And we should know next week
Yes.
Of the, of the bids.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the closing on the bids is, I believe, is the 14th. So once we get those bids in, we'll have a, a much better idea of what the project will cost. But Cheryl's correct, she found some extra money and put it in there, just so we have enough to cover the entire project, depending on what the bids come back with.
When you say, say entire project?
As, as scoped out.
Okay, so you're talking like Chestnut as well as First Street?
So some of the, as Bob, when Bob presented the project to you all, there are a handful of items, Chestnut would be included in that, that we're, we're bidding out, but there's also some things that are add alternates. So there's the base bid, which would be First Street alone.
Right.
And then, and I can't remember all the add alternates off the top of my head, but we are asking the bidders to bid on everything cohesively for the entire project, and we're hoping we can fund some of those alternates and do as much as we can.
Okay.
Does that also include the sewer system that's at the bank building?
That's, I believe that's one of the add alternates.
Is that an add-on?
Yes, exactly. So we're hoping we can do everything, depending on what the bids come back.
You know, I've got a lot of questions, but I'm just gonna have to get some time to talk with you, and maybe show together. But a couple of questions that I have tonight is, one thing I recognized is that the only place that we have contingencies is in the utility department, is there any particular reason why?
We have contingency in the general fund. It's in the miscellaneous department.
It's under miscellaneous, so that's, it's not specified as contingency, okay. The other thing that kinda stood out to me, and you know, our dispatch has been having issues. And, you know, projected for this year is $25,000, and the budget was, last year was $4,100, and of course, we basically for '23 budgeted $4,000 again. We get the projected for this year is $25,000. Has that been, has that stabilized as far as, Cheryl, do you know?
Are you talking about overtime?
Uh, yes.
Okay. So overtime there, yes, we budgeted $4,100, but they are short-staffed to, to at least three positions. So overtime is covering it, but if you take a look at the salaries, we budgeted 359,000, but we're only projected to spend 255, so they're offsetting.
There's a difference. Yeah, just, I've got a lot of questions, but I'm just gonna have to sit down with you guys and go over them individually.
Okay.
It's, I've got probably 20 or 30 questions. I'll set up some time.
Sounds good, Mayor. Yeah, Cheryl, I'd be happy to sit down.
The one, the one item that I did see, and as good to see as I know that, and been talking about, is the public works building, $500,000. And it's, it's good to see that that's been promised to them for a long time. Only problems they have is some, some place to place their vehicles. It's good to see that at least we're, we're looking at that. The other thing that I saw in the capital projects is under land acquisition. We're looking at acquiring some projects, but there's nothing in there on the acquisition on that. Is there any particular reason why that's not there?
And I don't know either, Mayor. We'll look into that, and then we'll, we'll get you a better answer.
Okay. I'll leave it at that, and I'd say we'll just set some time up in the next few days to get with you. I'll worry about the questions for next. Any other question that council has thought of?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I just wanted to, before the vote, just, thanks Cheryl for all of her countless hours and effort. She really is amazing, and we're lucky to have her, and she does such a good job of managing our finances.
You do a good job, Cheryl.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cheryl.
Call vote, please.
Devono?
Yes.
Riego?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Item E, resolution levying general property taxes based on the, upon the final 2022 certification, evaluation, to help defray costs to government for the city of Trinidad, Colorado, for the 2023 budget year. Let me take a motion. Second?
Second.
Ms. Garrett? Or is that you? Okay.
We received the final valuation from the accounting assessor for 2022, and it came in at 77,192,597. Of that, our mill rate levy is 17.579, yielding 1,356,969 for our general fund budget.
Questions from council?
Where is that, Cheryl? Oh, I see it. Is it down here below, on taxable real property? Where did you get that figure of 1.6 million?
1.3, okay. So it's the 77,192, which is line four, times our mill rate levy of 17.579%. And that yields 1.356.
1.3?
Yes.
Okay.
I think on your copy, it has a little adding machine key toward the bottom. I don't know, you can see that.
That's okay, I just. How do we, how do we figure out what mill, what mill levy is assigned to what department? How do you divvy up that money in between the departments?
I, so it's, it's all dumped into property taxes for a general fund. And, right, so just like sales tax, it's just drawn on by every single department to announce the general fund budget.
Okay.
Yeah, but specifically, and I, this part I really haven't looked into, but I do know that it's supposed to cover the unfunded mandate of the fire and police pension and the library fund. So that's why those two departments are drawing those amounts. And I don't know why, for the library, I've never figured that out, but I do know about fire and police pension. That's an unfunded mandate that is to be, that is to cover this amount. But the rest, the 1,108,000 goes to general fund, to just general departments.
Yes.
No questions.
No questions? The 77 million dollars, yeah. About that valuation, is that up or down from last year?
It's down just a little bit. Just, I think this affected it by maybe 2,000, maybe 1,000 to 2,000 dollars. It was minimal.
Okay, no other questions, call vote, please.
Devono?
Yes.
Riego?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Item F, First Revenant Ordinance, demanding the city of Trinidad's annual budget for fiscal year, dated around 1/1/2022, and ending 12/31/2022. Standing here in date of said, for consideration of said ordinance, on December 20, 2022, at 6:00 PM. Need someone to introduce?
I'll introduce it.
Second, are you motion?
Someone.
Second?
Second.
Discussion must never end.
So, Mayor, you were a little bit frightened by next year's budget. 2022 was extremely frightening. We had a lot of activity, a lot of movement, a lot of, a lot of budgeting changes throughout the year. Most specifically was the $2 million that was transferred for economic development. Overall, this budget is being amended by 9,225,000. Again, 2 million was for the economic development. But then we also have the committed funds by council for the First Street project, and I believe originally it was called the Main Street project. So first time we committed funds, we said 2.6 for the Main Street project. And then that money was decided to be put toward the First Street project, and we put that into capital. And then the next portion that was allocated by, or committed by council was 3 million for the First Street project, and I think it's included Maple and Chestnut. So because this project is getting ready to start, we're gonna be moving that money from the general fund into capital to cover the project. So those are significant increases. Also, we received the ARPA funding and used it for premium pay, for COVID premium pay. And because we paid for each, because salaries went out, out of each department, that money was accepted into the general fund, and it had to be transferred into the utilities to cover those costs. And total transferred out was 277,000 for the COVID premium pay into utilities. Other than that, there's just been some moderate changes here and there. You can see that I chose to increase police department wages and fire department wages, because those were the biggest departments, and their salaries were expended by such a significant amount because of the COVID premium pay. So we just basically saw the, the gist of it all increased right there for COVID premium pay. And then there's just, there's a $200,000 transfer out from water to power and light, and that's to cover the 4160 project, because it did come in 200,000 dollars higher. And I think that pretty much covers the, the higher transfers and expenditures for the year.
Just for the information for anybody listening tonight, I said the, the budget was 56,943,915. It went up to 66,169,337, is what you showed. Any other questions from council?
Richard, that's, it's 2022.
That's for the 2022.
Okay, yeah, that's right, because you said 9.2 million.
Yes, 9.2 million.
We are, we, on, on the budget part this year, next year it should be a little bit better because of the equipment that we have bought, like the fire department stuff, all updated. So are we taking any of that into consideration as far as, you know, equipment fleet management stuff? Because that seems like that was a big expense this year for us.
Right, so again, we won't receive those fire department apparatuses until, actually, one next year and the following year, so we're gonna continue to budget them. We have a million dollars budgeted for fleet, for fire department. And then we also have 200,000 dollars budgeted for the rest of general fund fleet. And then the utilities have a couple vehicles budgeted in there as well. You know.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I know we need the equipment, but that seemed like it really kinda hit us all at one time. What about the dumps for their machine order? We taking care of that out of the marijuana? Their backhoe, not backhoe, but their
They ordered a wheel Yeah, the wheel loader, we ordered, I don't think we're gonna receive it this year. However, 50, yes, that is going to be covered by marijuana. Every, every year we'll budget the loan payment from marijuana fees and transfer it into landfill to cover their, their debt service. Yes.
You know, fleet is always gonna be one of those revolving things, because as time goes on, we're replacing old, old vehicle, old vehicles.
And if council recalls, you did commit 1 million dollars out of our reserves, because we did have that funding available. We committed 1 million dollars out of reserves for those fire department apparatuses, as well as an additional 500,000 for fleet, because we just wanna have that money pledged to be able to keep up with our fleet replacement.
Yeah, interesting note, in the current bills, and I was asking Mr. Ruger about that, that PD bought a vehicle from the Kansas State Patrol, because they're having troubles finding vehicles.
That's right.
And so they expended some money to purchase, that was 29,000. Specifically, a vehicle is probably about 55,000.
I think they're about 65,000. But this one came to us, and it was equipped, pretty much, I mean, they're gonna add their own locales and what they need, radios, but technically, that's a used vehicle for almost 30,000 dollars, because they can't find anything else.
And that's what we're running into with all this equipment, is trying to get it in in time.
Mm-hmm.
It's an issue. Any other questions? Okay, call vote, please.
Devono?
Yes.
Riego?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. On to item N, council reports. Mr. Ball?
Last weekend, the Pearl Harbor Gun Show was a success at the Fort Wooton Day. Received a lot of money for maintenance at the Fort Wooton Memorial Square, so that was last Saturday and Sunday. That's all I have.
I have. I'm just gonna get together at some point, to see about the general fund.
Okay. Yes, sir.
The ARPA had a board meeting December 1st for the upcoming budget. You guys would have that in your packet if you want to look over it. Other than that, I have no, nothing, no other input.
Okay. Mind, just to let you know, I attended the Action 22 meeting last week, and something that has, we've been working on is they're planning on doing what they call leadership training, and there's a cost to it, it's like 5,500 dollars. But you actually will get a bachelor's degree out of it, and somehow or other, they're working with some of the colleges, where you can, you turn it into a master's program. And, but it's, it's several months long, it's like two days a month, but it's gonna be pretty, pretty in-depth. And, but members of Action 22 get a cut rate, I think it's gonna be like 2,500 dollars or something like that. But, you know, it's for somebody who wants to, I didn't bring the list with me, but I'll bring it, you know, maybe at the work session next week, and let you know all the topics that are gonna be covered during that six, I think, seven-month timeframe. And it looks like it's, it's gonna cover like federal government, state government, local government, and just other stuff. Even how to develop a bill, you have to write up a bill yourself, not to submit it, but to show them how to write up a bill. But I'll bring that information for you guys to, but it was, it's gonna be pretty interesting. And they're going to go and ask people across, I think they may be even, ask people across the state, maybe take and participate if you want to.
How are they gonna do the classes? Student classes?
No, I think they're gonna actually be, might be in person.
Okay.
It might be in person. But it's, it's kinda gonna be a kind of a new program. The one thing, Mr. Ruger, is sometime back, the college had asked if we wanted to work with, not the college, I do, it's the Rotary Club, to do something about Colorado Avenue, and I know Mr. Just and the lady that takes care of all our flowers, we're supposed, what's her name?
Karen.
Karen Ward. So have you checked to follow up to see where that's at?
Yeah, absolutely.
Because I know that Dr. Epple is gonna do the lead from her end. The other question that came up, and it just keeps popping up in meetings, how well set are we to protect for cyber security?
That's a really good question, Mr. Mayor. James Worley has worked really, really hard on deploying robust parameters, firewalls, software to monitor. Every computer that we have has monitoring on it. Our network is to the point where it should be impenetrable. But obviously, people get more sophisticated, and we're, we're never not gonna be vulnerable to a cyber attack, but that's something that we continue to develop and safeguard ourselves against all the time. But James has done a phenomenal job of setting up the infrastructure to protect the city, and I feel very confident that, you know, we're as safe as we can be at this point.
The reason why I bring that up is during the Action 22 meeting last week, there have been a couple of members, I guess, that have been hit, and it's caused some dearly.
Yeah, Mayor, you're not wrong. I think the going rate these days for hijacking, you know, someone's network is 80,000 dollars an hour when they, when the hijackers try to exploit entities. So it is something that really needs to be on our radar as a concern, so I appreciate you bringing that up.
There, you know, I know this isn't a discussion, but a lot of the companies I work with are now doing double identity.
Two-factor authentication?
Two-factor.
Yeah, and that is something that we wanna look into.
Is that something James can do?
Yeah, for, for network access and that type of thing, certainly, we can, we can look into those, those safeguards.
One other thing that I wanna bring up is that we have this leadership summit coming up next week.
Yes.
I don't know, I'd asked Ms. Oaktree to be there with us, I don't know if she'll be back by then.
She will not, unfortunately.
So I guess, Karen, would you mind participating? It's gonna be here.
Okay.
It's gonna be at the Space Decremer?
Space to Create, it's absolutely.
Yeah, and it's Friday the sixteenth at one P M. I'll send you the invite.
And the purpose, the purpose of this is bringing some of the leaders in the community together to talk about, okay, let's look at the, the good, the bad, the ugly. What are we doing right? What are we doing wrong? What are the potentials? These are the type of things that we want to get from the leaders of the community, tell us what, what they see and what they, what they would like to see or what they don't see. So that's kind of what we are looking for, because I think it's basically a good self-evaluation. So I think that would, that would, that would be good.
And Mayor, we, we plan to take notes on that meeting and follow up with a report, and we'll, we'll make sure to get that out to the entire council.
The other thing is, you know, we are planning on our regular leadership, our legislative day, and it's going to be in January again, where we bring in all of our state representatives, federal representatives, council, county, a few other businesses, other, like cog and others, to tell us what they're doing. So we'll let you guys know when that's, that date is set and the time.
Mr. Ruger? Mr. Mayor, I just have a couple of quick things, actually, just one. I just wanted to let the council know that last week we had the state come down and inspect our landfill, and they did find a couple of small things. The biggest issue they found was blowing trash. So I'm very happy with the way we're maintaining the landfill right now, no major findings, and so we've come a long way. But we will be coming to you soon, probably the next meeting, with a request to change the tipping fee. And I don't think you all are aware of that, but it's, it's time that we start making that fund a little bit more solvent. And that's all I have for tonight.
Yeah, that's been an ongoing discussion, I think I started, I think giving.
Mr. Ruger, can I ask you a question?
Sure. I mean, we were talking about security, just for a cur, update, have we got anything done at the community center or our city buildings for security cameras and stuff like that, alarms?
Yeah, we've, we've done a ton of work. Mr. Worley is deploying cameras throughout our entire facilities. So those are really the gold standard these days for monitoring and making sure nothing happens at our facilities. I don't know about alarm systems at all of our buildings, but we are focusing on, on upgrading the camera systems. The other thing that we're working heavily on is making all of our, our buildings badge access, and that'll include City Hall as well. And the brilliant benefit to that is getting rid of keys. Anyone could go make a copy of a key, take a key with them. If they take their, their badge with them, that would give them access, we can just go into the system and cut off all access as soon as they leave. So that's a, a big security concern that we're worried about too with building maintenance, but we are, we're working very heavy-handed to make sure all of our buildings are secure. So I appreciate you bringing that up. Mr. Downs?
Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers. I don't have a report. I just want to thank Councilwoman Criego for her work in presiding over the ethics proceeding. It was, it was tough, it was challenging, and you did a great job, and that was a thankless job. I mean, but, but thank you, thank you, those, those stuff. I just wanted to commend you for doing that. That's all I have, Mayor, council, thank you.
Motion to adjourn? So, second? Call a vote, please?
Devono?
Yes.
Criego?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. One day or against?
Yeah.
Are we going to continue to try to have our work session at three, do you think, or?